Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday evening, January 26, 2021. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this recording and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. I see Mr. Rowe, I believe you're from WATD, is that correct, sir? Mr. Rowe, okay, thank you. I see the thumbs up. So Mr. Rowe from WATD is recording the meeting. Is there anyone else who's recording the meeting? If so, please identify yourself by using the raised hand function or unmuting and introducing Okay, seeing none. The first item of business on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We had a very long set of minutes from January 12. Bill and Joe, I don't know if you're ready to act on those minutes this evening, or if you'd like those to be taken up next week.
I'd appreciate if we take them up next week, please.
You got it. You got it. That was our, that was our five-hour meeting that was preceded by a half-hour water meeting. Heidi Gall, yeoman's work on those minutes. That was a whole lot, whole lot to capture. The next item of business on our agenda is the Audit Committee presentation of the fiscal year 2020 financial statements. And this evening, before I turn it over to our town accountant, Sue Nickerson, for introductions, I believe that we have the auditors from Clifton, Larson, Allen, Jim Pietrowski, and Chris Rogers. I see that we are joined by members of the Audit Committee, including Chair Rob Schickel, Doug Farrington. I would also just like to acknowledge the other members of the Audit Committee, some who may also be here, Joshua Marine, Leonetta Scapini, I beg your pardon, and John Dealey. And, you know, just before doing this, I do want to recognize that just the incredible work that Sue Nickerson, our town accountant, does on just so many different things. And tonight, we're going to hear about one of the many hats that she wears, which has to do with ensuring the integrity of our financial statements. But in particular with COVID, Sue's job has gotten more complex. She's responsible for all of the COVID reimbursements and tracking. And as you hear about all the work that's been done, I just hope we can all pause for a moment and recognize the many, many hours that Sue and her team put into just the ongoing financial operations of the town. And I think what you're going to hear tonight from the Audit Committee and our external audit partners is that we are a very well-run town. And while it is definitely a team effort, Sue, I just like to recognize your very significant contributions to that.
Thank you very much, Mary.
So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. That was, that was awesome. I just wanted to introduce our Audit Committee Chair, Rob Schickel. He's going to go through the different points of the Audit Committee and our FY20 financials. And then he will turn it over to Jim from CLA on any other points that he wants to raise. I just want to thank everybody, every department who has helped with putting all this financials together. And I will turn it now over to Rob Schickel.
Thank you, Sue, and thanks, Mary, for your introduction, actually, both of you for that. Mary, I would definitely echo your comments in terms of Sue's strong support to the committee over the year. Couple of comments to follow on that. To the Board of Selectmen, thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening. I'm here representing the Audit Committee to present the town's financial statements. Federally funded, required single audit and management letter per our charter, or the committee charter. We met on multiple occasions over the past year to review the following reports prepared by Clifton, Larson, Allen, known as affectionately as CLA. And we voted unanimously in favor of acceptance of the following: the Town of Hingham Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, often referred to as the CAFR; the Town of Hingham GAO and Uniform Guidance Reports, year ending June 30, 2020; Town of Hingham Contributory Retirement System Pension Plan Schedules for the Year Ending December 31, 2019; Management Letter Discussing Internal Controls, Ongoing Status of Previously Reported Items, and Review of Upcoming Regulatory Challenges. So those are the four items that we voted in favor of, and the board should certainly have copies of, I believe, actually, to include hard copies. A couple of notes in terms of the findings from the auditors, and I'll open it up to questions and ask Jim and Chris from CLA to add some additional flavor, respond to comments. First of all, there were no material disagreements with management, a very positive remark. Second, the audited financial statements received an unmodified opinion. This is the best opinion that a government unit can receive. It indicates that the financial statements were prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and that they are fairly presented in all material respects. Third, the single audit report, however, was a modified opinion due to material noncompliance with allowable cost time sheet reporting as they relate to the SPED Special Education Department Cluster Grants. Of note, this is the third year with the same finding. I asked Jim and Chris to maybe explain a bit more on that in a minute. And then fourth, although a management letter was issued, no material weaknesses were identified in the internal control over financial reporting. So these, all these documents are before you. I'm happy to answer any questions and will likely refer to CLA with any questions.
Thank you, Rob. I'll just, I apologize.
Go ahead, Jim. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for having us here. And thank you, Rob, for the commentary. I do, just before I get into things, want to express my appreciation. Obviously, with the challenges due to the pandemic, obviously, it was a pretty difficult and different year as far as being able to obtain and review information. However, I just want to express my appreciation to Sue and her team, Jean Montgomery and her team in the Treasurer's Office, John Ferris and his team at the School Department, as well as Joan Allen and her team at the library. We think they did an exceptional job as far as providing us the information, being able to review and audit everything timely and allowing us to express an unmodified opinion on the financial statement. So much appreciated to the management involved. We think they did an exceptional job. I would also just express my appreciation for the committee as well, for their exceptional involvement throughout the audit process, and their engagement on making our audit an overall better process for the town and for CLA. So we appreciate their involvement, their engagement as well. As Rob commented, we did provide an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. It's the best opinion available, provides the opinion that the financial statements are materially fairly stated in all material aspects. So no misstatements to note. The internal control report that Rob referred to, there were no internal control findings. If there were a finding present in that report, it would indicate a serious problem that we would want to call to the attention of the board. However, no such findings were noted, so a clean report for this year on that end. Regarding the single audit report, which is part of the internal control report, I do just want to clarify, the opinion this year on the federal SPED grant program was not a modified opinion. It was, in fact, unmodified. So there was a clean opinion this year, just due to the reduced severity of the finding this year with the cleanup that's been done for the SPED grant program. Just want to clarify on that end. We did see some improvement. There was a finding related to the allowable costs and payroll. However, they were much less severe as in prior years. So just want to clarify that point there. And I think with that, I would just again express my appreciation to everybody involved in overall smooth process, considering the changes that we need to implement for this year's audit in the remote environment. Now, I don't know if, Chris, you have anything to add?
No, Jim, I think, I think you summed it up well. I will say that the involvement of the Audit Committee from an independent auditor aspect is very well-received. And you have a very engaged, you should be very happy with the selection of the Audit Committee because they're very engaged, as Jim, as Jim mentioned.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to start by asking my colleagues if they have any questions. Joe, we'll start with you. Any, any questions for the Audit Committee or for CLA?
I appreciate their efforts, their efforts. I do have a question about the timing. I note that for the pension plan, it's for the year ending December 31, 2019. Have we typically done, done it on that schedule in terms of when we receive an audit of the contributory retirement system?
Joe, the retirement system is on calendar year.
Yep.
Our CAFR is fiscal year, and it's fiscal FY20. So this is for the year ended June 20, June 30, 2020.
Right.
So the retirement would be the previous December, December of 19.
Got it.
Same with the light plant, actually, too.
Okay. I mean, I've read the reports, and it looks as if the work is complete. And thank you for your efforts. I've got no other questions.
Thank you. Bill?
I also read the reports, and Tom kind of gave me brief briefing this afternoon on the end of that. So my only comment is to thank Sue and the committee and CLA for all their work and their efforts.
Thank you.
Sue, will the, when will the CAFR be available for, for us?
Hard copy or on the website?
Both.
CLA is going to mail us some soon. And I will ask IT to put it on the website as soon as we can get it.
I would just say, for the benefit of the public, the comprehensive, the comprehensive annual financial report, or as Sue calls it, and we call it the CAFR, the way I tend to think about it is, it's very similar to an annual report for a corporation. And it contains a lot of important financial information. But I would also point out to people that it contains a lot of statistical and demographic information for the Town of Hingham that's very informative. We use it in the Selectmen's Office for many of our presentations, when we're speaking to things like population, or employees, or top 10 taxpayers in town. And what is also very, very helpful about the CAFR is that it gives a 10-year view. So you can sort of look at how things are changing. As, as, as we continue with the budget process for this year, I would, I would, I would recommend it for reading, although some may, some may say I'm a little bit of a geek for doing that. Is there anyone in the public who either has a question or wishes to make a comment with respect to the Audit Committee's presentation of the financial 2020 statements? Okay, seeing none. We actually, Joe and Bill, do have to take a vote. If, if one of you could put forward the motion, please?
Happy to do so. Make a motion to accept the fiscal 2020 financial statements and management letter as submitted.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you again very much.
Thank you.
Thank you to Sue, to the Audit Committee, and to CLA.
If you don't mind, just three more additional comments in general.
Yes, please.
So first, just to note, again, a big thank you to Sue here in the credit goes to her and CLA. The town received the Certificate of Achievement, Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the GFOA Government Financial Officers Association for Fiscal Year 2019. So that's the last CAFR. So that's the 24th consecutive year in a row that Hingham has run this award. I'll leave it to Sue to comment on, on that, but I think it's quite an achievement, just to get it and then to have it, you know, consecutively for 24 years. The second comment is, the audit, the 2020 audit includes the first three-year term of the engagement with Clifton, Larson, Allen. The committee has unanimously agreed to recommend to the town to extend the engagement with CLA for three additional years pursuant to the terms of the original contract. We do expect that there would be some fee increases due to material change over the coming years, due to things like the Weir River Water System. And we'll leave that to be between the town and CLA and expect that to be consistent with the terms of the original agreement. And then the third is, the topic is, again, outside of the committee here a bit, but the committee notes that although the South Shore Regional Emergency Communication Center, affectionately known as Shrek, is outside of the scope of the committee's charter, but due to the changes in the makeup of the Board of Selectmen over the last few years, we wanted to refresh and raise to the board that, due to Hingham's participation in the four-town entity, there are two notables here. Shrek has not undergone an audit since it was formed, in contrast to its own charter. And two, there was a deposit of a Shrek, of a check by Shrek that was misdirected and intended for the Town of Hingham. There was supposed to be a payback in, with a scheduled payback system by Shrek to Hingham that has yet to take place. So this continues to be a pending matter. These items are, again, outside of this charter of our, the scope of our charter for the Town of Hingham Committee, but we've learned about it. And what, just want to remind the town that this, these, these things continue.
Mary, you're muted.
Beg your pardon. I might just ask Town Administrator Tom Mayo if he just wanted to comment on those items, Tom?
Yeah, sure. Thank you for bringing that up, Rob. The, I have worked with the other town managers who are, together with me, make up the Board of Directors for the Shrek. And we have a five-year payback schedule for the, for the outstanding grant item, as well as we've identified an annual, an amount in our annual budget that will pay for an ongoing audit each year. So that both of those things have, are now in place.
And Tom, I would just comment that if there are any fee increases associated with the auditing requirements for the Weir River Water System, those incremental charges should actually be, you know, billed to the Enterprise Fund. So, you know, just, just as we do, you know, things like the insurance policy and other things, I think, you know, and we can just coordinate that through Superintendent Russ Tierney.
Yep.
Great. Rob, anything else to add?
That's it. Just a, yet another thank you to Sue for all her hard work. She does an awful lot for us behind the scenes to make it all, all happen and all go well. And thanks to Jim and Chris. They've made this a very tolerable situation, especially in pandemic times. It's not easy to get this group together and get things done. So kudos to all of them.
Thank you. And again, our, our thanks to you and, and the other members of the Audit Committee. The Audit Committee was actually only created, I think, about 15, I think, within the last 15 years, Sue. Does that sound about right?
It was in 2010.
Yeah. So actually, even, even short in that. And really, really important role, especially given the size, you know, the, the size of Hingham and the, the volume and amount of financial transactions that the town does. Okay, the next item of business on our agenda, we are being asked to sign two grant agreements. And these are actually, this is, this is what I would call more of a procedural or administrative vote by the Board, which is allowing us to sign grant agreements for CPC projects that were approved by last year's town meeting. Tonight, we're going to be approving two grant agreements. Tom, are you going to walk us through these? I'm looking for you on my screen.
I'm like waving. I believe we have Chairman of the CPC Larry Linder is on, is on the line.
Great. Oh, Larry, welcome. Larry, if maybe, if you could just explain what, what we're being asked to do, if you could give your name and address for the record, that would be great.
Sure. Larry Linder, 22 Water Street. So you're being asked to sign two grant agreements tonight, as you said, Mary. One is for the design and construction documents for, bless you, for a pool at the Country Club for up to $500,000. And the other is, Mark, is it 75? He's muted, but I think it's 75,000 to.
Yes, that's correct, Larry.
Yes?
Yes.
Yeah. 75,000 to repair the tennis courts at the Plymouth River School.
Okay. And Tom, or Michelle, or Larry, I'm assuming that counsel for the town, I know, I know Bill, Joe, and I have reviewed these grant agreements. Counsel for the town has reviewed them and found them in order?
Yes.
Terrific. I know that we're joined tonight. I see Mark Thorell, Kevin Whalen, Christine Smith. Thank you all for being here. I didn't know if any of you had any comments to make with respect to these grant agreements. Mark, anything to add on the recreation grant?
Thanks, Mary. No, just excited to get this work done this summer to improve the conditions at the Plymouth River Tennis Courts. So that's my only comment. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Kevin Whalen, Director of the Country Club?
Yep, same as Mark. We're on getting on our way. We've already hired a designer and a project manager. As you all know, we have two projects going on at the Country Club. One is the maintenance building, and then the other one is the design of the pool. So we hired a project manager to oversee both, and we're moving forward with that. So it's, some exciting things are happening up at the Country Club.
Excellent. Bill Ramsey, any questions for Tom, or Larry, or Kevin, or Mark with respect to these grant agreements?
No question, Mary. I'm just, as you noted earlier, we're just acting on Article 19 of last year's town meeting.
Thank you. Joe, any questions?
Not questions, it's an observation. I note for the South Shore Country Club grant that there are three special conditions. First, that the project cannot commence without the consultation of an engineer. And second, the project shall require engineers' prior approval of the new site for the pool. And third, the recipient to notify a butters and have a meeting to address any concerns prior to the start of the project. So these are all conditions that have been discussed before. I'm glad to see that they are in the documents, and I've got no questions. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the public with respect to these grant agreements? Okay, seeing none, I would accept motions.
I'll make the motion on the South Shore Country Club vote, Mary, simply because I need to abstain on the recreation. One, given that my spouse is a recreation commissioner. So with that, I'd make a motion to enter a grant agreement by and among the Board of, the Board, the Community Preservation Committee, and the South Shore Country Club for the grant of $500,000 in Community Preservation Act funds, approved under Article 19 by the 2020 Annual, Annual Town Meeting, in accordance with the conditions of said Article 19, and to authorize the town administrator to sign said agreement.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
I will make a motion to enter into a grant agreement by and among the Board, the Community Preservation Committee, and the Hingham Recreation Department for the grant of $75,000 in Community Preservation Act funds, approved under Article 19 by the 2020 Annual Town Meeting, in accordance with the conditions of said Article 19, and to authorize the town administrator to sign said agreement.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And Bill will be abstaining, Heidi. Thank you very much. Larry, Kevin, Mark, Christine, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, and I believe it's perhaps the reason that many of you have joined our meeting tonight, and we're grateful and we welcome you, is for a police chief candidate interview. Before explaining how tonight's interview will work, I'd like to start out and ask Town Administrator Tom Mayo if he could just please recap, for the benefit of, of the viewing public, the, the hiring, the process that the town has undertaken that has brought us forward to this evening.
Great. Thank you, Mary. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. So as you'll remember, back on December 15, I outlined for the Board a process to hire a new police chief. So consistent with that process, to date, we have done the following. We've issued the job posting. We've compiled the applications. We've distributed the information to the Board members, including a resume and recommendations from our only candidate, interim chief David Jones, correspondence received by the public regarding this hire, and the police chief job description. Additionally, we have also coordinated an interview of our candidate that was held by three highly qualified and respected Massachusetts police chiefs. The chiefs panel was comprised of Chief Phil Tavares of the Marshfield Police Department, Chief Michael Dontrmont of the Dedham Police Department, and Chief Kenneth Berkowitz of the Canton Police Department. The interview was held via Zoom on Thursday, January 21. I would like to take this opportunity to offer my thanks to these dedicated chiefs. They were under absolutely no obligation to participate in our process, but all graciously offered to take time out of their day to assist us. So in addition to the documents I mentioned earlier, you have all also received a copy of the rating sheet used by the chiefs, as well as their collective evaluation of interim chief Jones. The next step in the hiring process brings us to tonight. We are now entering into a publicly-held interview of the candidate for police chief. The interview will be conducted by the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Tom. And I would just mention that over the last several weeks, members of the community were invited to submit questions for consideration for this evening's interview. And I would like to thank the citizens who submitted questions for us. This evening, the, the way this process is going to unfold, first and foremost, for those who have joined, the members of the Board will be asking questions of the candidate. Members of the audience are able to watch, to listen. There will not be an opportunity for public question or public comment during this interview. We expect that this interview will last for approximately one hour. It will begin, we will be inviting our candidate to provide an introduction. That will be followed by questions from the Board. And each member of the Board gave input to the town administrator with respect to categories for questions. We wanted to make sure that this evening's interview covered a variety of topics that represent the totality of this very important job. So the categories that we're going to be, the categories for interview questions this evening, we're going to start out with leadership and vision for the department. The next category will be administration and day-to-day operations. The third category, community policing and community relations. And the last category, we just kind of said, was going to be miscellaneous if there are questions that don't necessarily fit in one of those categories. What we'll try to do, my colleagues and I have all prepared questions. We're going to rotate asking questions. We'll spend about 10 or 15 minutes on a topic, and then, and then move on to the next topic. At the conclusion of the interview, we will once again give our candidate the opportunity to make any closing remarks. And I would also note that the questions that were received from the public and the questions that individual Board members have prepared have not been shared with our candidate. So with that, it is, it is my pleasure to introduce interim police chief David Jones. Welcome. And interim chief, as, as, and, and we talked today, and I, I basically let, let interim chief Jones know how this interview is going to proceed. So as a way of starting out, I would invite you to introduce yourself to the Board, to the community, to speak to your background, your experience, why you're interested in being the police chief for the Town of Hingham. So with that, I will, I will turn it over to you. Welcome.
Great. Thank you very much, Mary. So a little bit of background, that was.
So a little bit of background, I was raised in Hingham. I went through a Hingham Public Schools. I volunteered with the Troop One, the Boy Scouts in Hingham as an assistant scout master and also as an Eagle Scout with them. I got my bachelor's degree from Curry College in Milton and my master's degree from Roger Williams University in Rhode Island. I've worked for the Hingham Police Department for a little over 20 years now. Started off as a patrolman and was promoted to sergeant in 2010. I was then promoted to lieutenant in 2012. And in 2015, I was given the opportunity to serve as deputy chief under Chief Olson. So I worked closely with Chief Olson in the day-to-day operations of the department in my position as deputy chief. And since his retirement in August, I was appointed as the, as the interim chief. Throughout my career, I've held many positions in Metro, the Metropolitan Law Enforcement Council. I was the incident response team coordinator. I'm an instructor and trainer with the police department. I served on the honor guard in the police department. I was a field training officer and the Citizens Police Academy director for some time here. You know, and all that with a goal of bettering and improving the department that I work in and our community. So more recently, I served as a, or am serving as an elected member of our retirement board. I'm on the traffic committee and a member of the town's COVID response team, which includes the restaurant reopening and the general reopening groups. I sincerely enjoy coming to work every day and working with our community partners as well as the town departments and our regional public safety partners. Leading this agency has been a goal of mine since I joined this department. You know, I mentioned during, when I was appointed interim, that when I was asked what I wanted to do in the department in my initial interview, when I was going for the job of patrolman, I said someday I want to be the chief and that still holds true today. So I've worked with an incredible group of officers and civilian staff. And I feel that they deserve a committed, a committed leader of the department. I look forward towards the future and just not maintain the status quo here, but I'm always looking to better the department and improve our level of service and commitment to the community. And I just want to thank all of you for the opportunity to interview tonight for this position.
Thank you. So the first kind of category of questions that we're going to address have to do with leadership and vision for the department. And I'm going to lead off with a question. And then I'll, we'll turn it to Joe for a question, to Bill for a question. And then, you know, maybe go around again. Interim chief Jones, in your view, what is, this is a two-part question. What is the biggest challenge facing the Hingham Police Department today and what is the biggest opportunity? And what steps would you take as police chief for Hingham to address both of those?
Well, the biggest challenge, one of the biggest challenges we're facing right now is, is sort of how to operate, you know, in, in COVID, I think. You know, it's impacted the job. You know, it pretty much touches everything that we do with response to calls, to training, to how we conduct shift changes. So we've had to completely redo the way that we, the way that we operate in the department on a daily basis. You know, but we've come together as a team. We've sort of developed new, new methods and new, new ways to handle the challenges that come up every single day. You know, whether it be from a response to a call and how to interact safely with a member of the community. You know, to, to how to safely do that transition between shifts and how do we, you know, deal with, you know, making the car safe between, when you're handing off between two different officers. So now that's sort of a huge challenge that we've sort of been faced with recently and sort of how we've, how we've overcome it. And what was the second part of the question?
The biggest opportunity that you see?
The biggest opportunity, I think that we have right now is sort of when we reengage with the community. So we've been forced to sort of, because of COVID, we've been forced to sort of pull back from all the programs that our department does so well, like the Community Citizens Police Academy, our Family Fun Day, our National Light Out, the Rad Kids, Rad Women's and Rad Seniors Programs that we have. So all those sort of community things, we've had to pull back from that. I, I think sort of re-engaging, you know, with the community and finding new, new ways to do that and sort of how to, you know, how to re-engage everybody and bring everybody back in, you know, sort of into the department. And sort of build those ties again that we've, that we've sort of, we haven't really lost, but it's sort of taken a different path. We've been, you know, forced to go more online with social media, et cetera. And we'd sort of like to bring it back to like an in-person, more personal level.
Thank you. Joe Fisher, question?
Yes, Dave, welcome. Good to see you.
Thank you, same.
In your experience, what is the key to developing a good team? How have you succeeded in building mutual trust, respect and cooperation?
Right, so we have an excellent, really top-notch team here at, at Hingham Police Department. The biggest thing I think of building them is leadership by example. You know, I, I wouldn't do anything, I wouldn't ask them to do anything that I haven't done myself. You know, so I think leading by, by example, providing training opportunities to the officers and the staff and just constantly challenging them, giving them new opportunities. You know, new trainings, new, new seminars, new, new ways of doing things and looking at things, new technology. I think that's sort of the best way to handle that.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill?
Chief Jones, good, good to see you this evening.
Thanks, likewise.
We're currently having a national discussion about police reform. In fact, the legislature just passed a state bill on police reform. How do you see law enforcement changing over the next five years?
Alright, so sort of like I, I mentioned previously, police departments are constantly, especially in Hingham, we're constantly adapting, we're constantly, you know, facing new challenges and how to, dealing with how to overcome them and adjusting. You know, and the biggest example is like I mentioned initially was, was COVID and sort of how we, you know, that sort of touched every way that we do our jobs. I, I think the biggest challenge that we're going to be facing is sort of integrating, integrating the requirements of, of police reform. Where so much of it is sort of, you know, unknown, there's a, is a new certification process that we're going to have to undertake and sort of how do we, how do we go about that? What kind of documentation are we going to need? Trainings that people hold and certifications, sort of how do we document that and submit that to, you know, make that part of that certification process for police officers? And, and then, you know, hand in hand with that, sort of how, how that certification and process is going to exist with the current civil service system. So I think that's going to provide, you know, a big challenge for the department. You know, but I'm confident that we'll be able to, to meet those challenges.
Thank you. Joe and Bill, I think time permitting, we can each kind of go, you know, ask another question in this area. And I'll take the next one. I wondered if you could speak to your, you know, your philosophy and your approach for recruitment and retention of law enforcement personnel and specifically what steps Hingham can take to attract more diverse candidates?
So right now for recruitment specifically, we're part of the civil service system in Massachusetts. So we're sort of bound by, by the hiring process that they set forth. So it's a statewide exam that's posted and people can take it from across the state. Preference is given to residents in the town of Hingham that take that exam. And then, you know, the exam is scored and we hire based off, based off those test scores. I think one way maybe that we can improve upon that is, is when a test is announced through civil service, we could maybe do some community engagement with maybe some different groups that might draw in some different folks that might not be thinking about a career in law enforcement. But we are sort of bound by the constraints of, of civil service and, and the rules that they put in place. As far as retention and retaining candidates, you know, I mentioned earlier that one of the biggest things that, that we can do is, is provide opportunity for our employees. Different challenges, different trainings they can go to, different jobs they can participate in. Just to keep their interest and sort of keep a, keep the job fresh and interesting for them. So I think those are the two, two main ways that we can address those two areas.
Thank you. Joe, another question?
Yes. Dave, you've outlined your history in the, the Hingham Police Department. Can you provide an example of when you set expectations and monitored the performance of a subordinate officer or officers? What guidance and direction did you find most effective in those circumstances?
So, you know, I was a sergeant and a lieutenant in charge of shifts before. And like I mentioned earlier, when you set expectations, you get, you know, if, if you're the type of leader that is like I am, you know, more of a democratic type leader. You know, and, and in crisis, obviously that, that changes, right? You can't be democratic during a crisis. But if you seek participation of, of your employees and your officers and you engage them constantly in discussion, they're going to respect you and they're going to sort of, you know, sort of follow you naturally. You know, so if you're, if you're leading by example and you're running that sort of a shift, they, you know, it just sort of falls into place. They know what to expect of you and you, you laid out your expectations clearly by, by your own actions. But does that sort of answer your question or is that?
No, no, that's helpful. That's good. Thank you.
And Joe?
During last week's budget discussions, you mentioned the need for a social worker in your budget and utilizing the social worker more in policing efforts. Could you, could you expand upon that, particularly when you interact with individuals with mental health issues or other disabilities, individuals dealing with substance abuse issues and areas of domestic violence? How would you utilize a social worker in your policing efforts?
Sure. So social workers have become, you know, sort of a, especially in our region, they've become commonplace. So we currently share a social worker with the Waymouth Police Department. We got funding on a, on a grant between the two of us for that. So it was a sort of regional effort. And, you know, she allows, you know, she works with us part-time and Waymouth part-time, but she is available on call. So she's available to come out and be right on scene with us. You know, on a day that she's working, she rides with the officers. You know, she'll go out with it, with them on, on calls. If she's at the station working on a fall or anything else, we can have a car come back and pick her up and go right up to the scene. Having that person right there provides sort of instant resources to, to someone who is in crisis or in need. It also provides that, those same benefits to, to family of that person as well, that, that might be sort of at their wits end with trying to navigate a, a court system or, you know, health insurance coverage or something like that. She's able to provide resources right away to, to those people. So having, having a mental health clinician on staff with us, you know, has, has really given us an opportunity to, to reach out to, to members of the community and provide a service to them that they might otherwise find very difficult to, to obtain. It also makes our life and our jobs a lot easier because we're able to, to bring situations to, to a resolution that, that we might have otherwise had to have somebody, you know, go to, go to a hospital or be, you know, it's section 12, you know, brought to the hospital against their will or some other type of, you know, intervention where, where it's, you know, at a crisis level as opposed to just respond to a call and having that available right away. She's also been able to provide a follow-up. You know, if she's not working and, and the officers have a, a call that they went on that, you know, like I mentioned before, a family member, something might be in need of some services with a relative they're dealing with or a neighbor or, or a friend, you know, this person can provide those resources to them, you know, on a follow-up basis. The officers are in constant communication with, with her. They provide reports via email. They can email her, her questions. She's available pretty much 24/7 to us if, if we needed a question answered quickly. So you know, having a mental health clinician, working with the police department, it provides just an extra, extra layer of service that people have come to expect and, and deserve.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're going to move into sort of the next area of questions, which has to do with administration and, and day-to-day operations. Bill, why don't we start with you and then go to Joe and then go to me and we'll kind of go in that order this time around?
With respect to day-to-day operations, acting chief, you know, someone in the military for 20 years, we receive orders we don't like. And I'm kind of curious, if you received an order or sorry, a directive from either the town administrator or the Board of Selectmen that you personally disagree with, but it's the lawful directive, how would you handle that situation?
Okay, so it's a, it's coming from either the town administrator or somebody to me and I, and I don't personally agree with it. Is that?
So yeah, it's a directive that's coming from the board or the town administrator, obviously your supervisors. And you personally don't agree with the directive, but it's, it's a lawful directive. How would you personally handle that situation and carrying it out or refusing to carry it out?
Great. So it's a, that's a good question. So in a circumstance like this or pretty much anything, communication is key. So, you know, in a scenario where, where I didn't agree with it, I'd request a meeting, you know, to, to discuss and seek to understand where, you know, where this is coming from, discuss any alternatives that are available and, you know, how to best implement those alternatives or, you know, the original order if at the end of the day, that, that's what has to be done. But ultimately, you know, be able to communicate and come to an understanding and, and explain the decision to members of the public and, and the department as well. So I, I think communications is, is key, having an open line of communication and be able to discuss that and then coming to a, to an agreement and, and moving forward.
Joe?
I'm going to switch to money. As the chief, you are responsible for the police department budget. What is the most challenging part of budgeting for you?
Well, I always want more money. So that's, that's challenging. But I, I think just, just, you know, sort of making the police department as efficient as you can while operating within the budget is, is, is challenging. So you sort of need to operate in a fiscally responsible manner. You know, and you can do that, you know, in different ways while still not sort of reducing services. You know, we, we have a, especially in this area, we've, we're, we're able to tap into, you know, more of a regional approach. So we're, we're members of the Social Regional Emergency Communication Center, that regional dispatch center. We have regional training opportunities. So we have the Metropolitan Law Enforcement Council, for example, or, or the Old Colony Police Anti-Crime Task Force is another one. Where we're able to pull sort of resources and personnel from, from other agencies and, and the organizations themselves. You know, without, without expending money, you know, you know, the town's money. So if we had, you know, for example, an organized crime event going on in town and we needed some, some undercover equipment, some surveillance equipment, we could tap into, to those regional partners and, and get those. They'd also provide personnel to us to, 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 to assist in those surveillances or, or anything that, investigations, et cetera. You know, regional, regional training opportunities also are, are big with, with budgeting and sort of operating within a budget. So you know, we, we collaborate with the Sichet Police Department as frequently. They have a, a, a good training room that we use, emergency operations in our training room. And, you know, the past couple of years, we, we've done our, our annual in-service training with them together and shared the cost of that. So that's sort of another way to, to operate effectively. And then, you know, there's, there's always grants. So we have a dedicated and trained couple of officers that are grant writers for our department so they can seek out different training, training opportunities and, and, you know, funding sources for other, for other things. training opportunities and, and, you know, funding sources for other, for other things.
Can I ask one?
Sure. I just want to make sure.
Oh, did you have follow-up, Joe?
Yeah, I did. Cause I, I mean, I think you've given a, a broad presentation. What I was hoping you'd say is that there's a particular aspect of budgeting that's the most challenging and where perhaps the board of selectmen may be of assistance to you. So i- is there something in particular that's really a big challenge, whether it's forecasting or, or, you know, accounting for things that have done, that, that have happened in the past? Is there an aspect of the budget process that's the most challenging for you?
Most challenging, I'd, I'd say is you know, especially this year going through it, I've got a, it's got advisory committee after this meeting, for example, is just, you know, sort of laying out, you know, especially on the, on the salary end of, and the personnel side, it's sort of laying out all the, all the different expenses, whether it be, you know, training and contractual obligations, educational incentives and things like that. And sort of just figuring out a way to sort of line all those up and especially projecting in the future because you have things that are, that are changing. There's, there's promotions, there's retirements, there's people going to school and getting a, you know, a, a higher education degree, et cetera. So sort of forecasting in that aspect has been somewhat challenging and you sort of got to take like an educated guess at, at where we're headed, but that's probably the most challenging part that I found.
Great. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt, Mary.
No, that's okay. You're all set?
Yes.
Okay. I'm, I'm going to switch to a different, a different topic. You know, when, when I have had the opportunity to engage and, and to just be at, at roll calls, it, it always reminds me that, that the, that the men and women to work in the Hingham Police Department are exposed to a lot of sensitive information that has to do with our residents. And I think we may all recall that last summer, there was a letter written by a town resident which had that resident's personal contact details. It was shared by a town employee, not clear who shared it outside, and, and that resulted in significant harassment of the letters, the author of the letter and, and the author's family. As chief, what measures would you take to ensure that the officers and the staff within the Hingham Police Department respect the integrity and the privacy of, of Hingham residents and the sensitive information they are exposed to in the course of doing their jobs?
All right. So that's a great question because, you know, everything that, that law enforcement officers deal with on a daily basis is considered or could be considered sensitive. So whether it's a call that they go on, whether it is, you know, a person's criminal record or driving record that they run on a traffic stop or at a scene, you know, or whether it's something like, like you mentioned, where it's an email that contains someone's personal information. You know, officers are held to a high level, a high standard. You know, and, and as chief, you know, that, having that trust from the community and having that, you know, e- even the, even the notion that, that that trust was violated is disturbing. You know, the men and women that work here go through a great deal of training. They take a lot of pride in their job, a lot of pride in their positions. And, you know, if, they would be as, as sort of devastated as, as I would be if, you know, somebody betrayed that trust and released someone's personal information or confidential information like that. You know, I, I think the residents have to have and be able to have a, a high level of confidence in the officers. The civilian staff, you know, our, our record staff are, you know, highway master's animal control officers are all over the top. They should have confidence in every, in every aspect of, of the department. And, you know, I know that I hold myself to that standard and I would expect that my officers and staff hold themselves to that standard as well. And if they are releasing information or, or, you know, if people were found to have been releasing information, they'd be held accountable for that.
Thank you. Bill, another, another question related to administration and day-to-day operations?
Day-to-day operations, acting chief, as I said earlier, we're having a national discussion on police reform and policing. And part of that discussion is the use of force and how police officers use force. So my question to you is, what actions would you take as a police chief to ensure transparency in the work of your department? Specifically, what is your plan to ensure there is transparency with respect to the use of force data by police officers in your department?
Okay. So obviously, you know, with policing, transparency and accountability is, is paramount. You know, and, and specifically use of force, Hingham is among 42% of nationwide of, of all agencies that voluntarily report use of force data to the FBI. So we are very transparent. We're, you know, among a, a small minority or, you know, less than half of departments nationwide who do voluntarily submit our use of force data to the FBI already. Obviously that's public information. It's available through the FBI, but we do that, we do that willingly. We, we've done that for a number of years now. So my plan is to obviously continue that and, and be as transparent as possible.
Thank you. Joe, another question?
Sure. One of the other administrative aspects of the police department is working with the police unions. Unions provide important representation and professional protection for police officers. Can you talk about how the department and the unions communicate with each other and how they work as partners in building positive community relations?
Okay. So we, we have, the police department has two unions. They have the Patrol Officers Union and the Supervisors Union. You know, I think that, that administration and the unions, you know, enjoy a very good relationship. You know, we understand that we, that we're all working towards the same goal. You know, and the, the unions are, are designed to, to protect the interests of the employees. You know, and, and what was the question again? The?
The question was, let me see, I even moved the question away. So if you could talk about how the department and the unions communicate with each other and how they work as partners in building positive community relations?
Okay, great. Yeah. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't going completely off track there. So, you know, we, like I mentioned, we have a great communication, open lines of communication between the union officials and administration of the police department. We've enjoyed that for, you know, for as long as I've been here. There's always been a, a great relationship between administration and even, even the town, you know, boards, the personnel board, et cetera, they're doing contract negotiations. So you know, the unions, you know, have a, have a, have a very positive outlook and a very, you know, we work together towards the same goal. That's basically what I'm trying to say. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Okay. And, you know, one last question here. Over, over the last several months, as incidents have happened around the nation, a question that I've received on, on several different occasions from different citizens is, is the question of body cameras. And I've noticed that for the last couple of years, body cameras are in the, in the Capitol Outlay Plan. And I was just wondering, you know, do, do you support, do you support the use of body cameras as, as chief, you know, you'll be appearing in front of the Capitol Outlay Committee? And, and I just wondered where that fell within, you know, some of your capital priorities?
Sure. So, you know, we have cruiser cameras in Hingham right now. And, you know, I was, I was instrumental in, in bringing those onboard here as part of the startup program. So we have cruiser cameras. They have three cameras in each vehicle. There's a forward-facing camera, a panoramic camera, and then there's a rear seat prisoner camera. There's also audio in the vehicle and the officers have a body mic that they can use as well. So that technology there is sort of proven, right? It's, it's been out there for a while. We had, we had cruiser cameras here. I mean, years ago, when I first started, it was the old VHS tapes in the, in the trunk. So you know, there, but the, the technology that has come a long way. The cruiser cameras that, that we invested in have a sort of a, a, a natural field of view. They have a, there's no enhancement. There's no like night vision enhancement, et cetera. So it's giving a, a real picture of what the officers, the officers see. So the technology, like I mentioned, it's been out there for a long time. It's, it's a proven technology. Body, the problem with body cameras that, that, that we've sort of faced, and every year it does come up. It's such a newer technology that it's constantly changing and the, the storage costs alone is, is the biggest obstacle that we've sort of come up on here. And it's just the, the data that they record, it's high definition video and audio, the storage requirements are enormous. So, and the technology is just sort of, it, it's still evolving and still changing. So it's not really, you know, the, the systems are so different and so vast, they really hasn't, hasn't come up with a, a standard like they have with like a, an in-car video. So there's also placement issues with the body cameras where if it's some, some are worn in the chest, some have like eyeglasses that are worn where they've been, some are on the shoulder. So there's all sorts of issues with, with placement and, you know, and that end of the technology too. So I just think that body cams are, you know, well, well, it's a, a upcoming and promising area. There's, there's a lot of challenges with it right now and a lot of costs that is associated with them that a lot of departments aren't prepared to, to, you know, to sort of deal with when, when they, when they enter into the body cam. When I start buying them, because you've got the cost of the equipment itself, then you've got the sort of the infrastructure that goes behind it, how to download and how to store all those videos and then retention, how long do you store them for? And then another really big area that's sort of come up is, is privacy, something that you brought up earlier. So a body cam is always on. If you go into someone's house on a, on a call for, you know, a wellbeing check or something like that, and, and now you're inside someone's personal home with a body cam. It's recording everything in that person's private home. That's public information. That's public record. And that's an, an area that, that we're not, I'm not comfortable yet because the law hasn't really come up with that yet as far as protecting people's privacy with, with the body cams. So, you know, I, I think that there is definitely, you know, a future for them, but until those areas that I brought up are addressed, I just don't, I don't think that they're, that we're ready for them here just yet. So that's, that's sort of why they've been keep pushing down the road. Every year we sort of look at it and reevaluate all these problems.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the next category, which is community police, community policing and community relations. And Bill and Joe, I'm trying to sort of scramble up the order here. So I think we're going to lead off with Joe, then go to me, then go to Bill and as we've done, go around a couple of times. So Joe, would you lead off here, please?
Sure, I will. I'm going to lead off with something timely. Today, President Joe Biden's administration issued a statement that quote, committed the whole of our government to advance racial justice and equity for all, unquote. As police chief, do you see the need for Hingham to adopt any new policies or procedures to advance racial justice and equity in our town? And if so, what would you propose and how can the board of selectmen assist in your efforts?
So as, as far as policies, we, you know, one of my sort of goals and, and has been one of the administration's goals here is moving towards accreditation. Accreditation brings a sort of a level of professionalism and, you know, best practices to police departments. And there's state level accreditation and national accreditation. So we're working towards a state level accreditation right, right now. I think that alone is going to address a lot of that, but, you know, in, in any, and especially here, there, there is zero room for any sort of hate or discrimination in law enforcement. And, you know, all members of the Hingham Police Department, you know, for myself all the way down, you know, we live by the core values of this department, which are integrity, service, excellence and leadership. And I think by sort of embodying those that, that, you know, it'll eliminate any, any sort of, you know, bias or anything that, that has, you know, that, that could creep up.
Okay. I'm going to ask the next question and I'm actually, it's, it's kind of a variation on what Joe's asked, but it's at a more local level. And, and this is actually a, I'm going to read this and you'll be able to tell that this was actually a question that was provided by a member of the community. My two sons are six years old and black. We are frequently out and about town, walking, riding bikes, et cetera. In light of recent tragic events in the U.S. and even on a lesser scale in their own community, I lay awake wondering if and when I need to introduce my boys to the police department so they are not harassed or targeted and so they feel safe to live here. As police chief, what will be your first actions to ensure that no member of our community is a victim of bias by the police department?
So that's a great question. And I think, you know, part of what was in that statement, right, is to, is we would encourage people to come into the police station or, you know, or approach officers out on the road and, and introduce themselves to, to us. Like I said, we have, we have a lot of community programs that are designed to, to engage with the community, with different aspects of the community. But with, if, if somebody has, has a concern, you know, about their children, as in this case, I would invite them to come in and, and meet the officers of the police department. You know, either come into the front lobby or, or, you know, if you see an officer out, flag him down and talk to him. We have got an, an incredible team here, a dedicated and committed team here that is committed to this town, committed to our mission. And, and I guarantee that, that after engaging with any member of this agency, they would feel secure in this community. As, as I stated earlier, there, there is zero room for hate or discrimination in law enforcement, especially at this, you know, the local level in the Hingham Police Department. And I, I, I really feel that the members of our agency sort of embody that notion. And, and if given the opportunity to speak with any family that's concerned, you know, myself or any member of, of my team would be able to, to sort of address those fears and, and, and give some advice if they're concerned about, you know, areas other than, than the police sort of interacting with, with, with other people. So.
Thank you. Bill, question on community policing and community relations?
Thank you. The Hingham Police Department has a long tradition of community policing efforts. You mentioned some of them tonight. You mentioned RADS, Citizens Police Academy, et cetera. Where would you improve and expand community policing activity as the chief?
So I think, I think the first thing if for improvement would be, you know, to, to sort of start re-engaging these programs. And, and maybe as we're doing that, because we haven't been able to do any of them because of, of COVID really. But, but reevaluate them as we're sort of re-engaging them and, and seeing if there's any ways that we can interact with, with different members of the community, different, different community groups. You know, sort of bring, bring these programs to them too. So, you know, I know I mentioned this, this isn't Police Academy. We actually, some people think we, we have one and that's here at the police station. We actually have two. We have one up at, at Linden Ponds. You know, that, that is specifically deals with there. We have, you know, we have our SNAP, our, our special needs athletic partnership. You know, we, we have five school resource officers in Hingham, which, which, which is incredible. And, and it's the, you know, for an agency our size, it's, it's pretty much unheard of. We have, we have three in the public schools and we have two at private schools in Hingham. We have one at Notre Dame Academy and one at the Social Educational Collective. So I, I think maybe as we start re-engaging our, our community programs and re-engaging the community, we evaluate, you know, sort of how we can, how can we reach the most people and make the most impact in our community. That'll be my first call.
Joe, another question?
I do, although I will say that Bill just stole my question on community policing. So, but I think the answer was, was, was good. I want to talk about our, our senior community. Senior citizens are often the target of scams and sometimes they live in fear of violence. And I know that the police department is vigilant, but is there anything further that you recommend for enhancing the safety of the town seniors?
So, yeah, I think especially recently, whenever there's any sort of a, you know, a crisis, people come out of the woodwork to take advantage of people. And, and seniors are a incredibly vulnerable population. You know, because some, sometimes they're alone, sometimes they, they're, they don't have, you know, as much technological experience as, as some of the younger folks do. You know, and, and they fall victim to, to a scam, whether it's, you know, the grandparent scam where somebody calls up and pretends to be a, a family member in distress and and pretends to be a, a family member in distress and, and gets the person talking and getting information from them and, and sort of uh, get them to, to transfer money uh, to them and, and, you know, tell them to, to not tell the other members of the family uh, because they're embarrassed, et cetera. So uh, education uh, i- is the key to uh, sort of preventing this. And we, we have an initiative, uh, the police department that, you know, I think we need to revisit. Um, again, sort of reach new, uh, you know, new employees of, of businesses and stuff. But we, we have uh, they're not really bumper stickers, they're signs that we put out at local businesses where people fall victim to scams. So if you, if somebody's requesting, um, you know, uh, you transfer money uh, to them, they, they're never gonna, gonna, you know, have you make out a check and send it to them. They're gonna have you get gift cards or Western Union and, and send money that way. And we, we did an education uh, in- initiative, uh, you know, a year or two back where we, where we spoke with the clerks at these locations to, and gave them, uh, you know, indications of, of somebody who might be, you know, this is somebody who might be uh, a, a victim of a scam. Uh, and sort of stopped a lot of, a lot of these uh, uh, potential victims from, from falling through and, and transferring money. So uh, I, I think that education is, is huge. Um, I, I think revisiting uh, that initiative and, and then, you know, thinking of some others, uh, where we can educate not only the, the, you know, seniors like you mentioned, but also, um, you know, points of contact that they might have where they're trying to carry out these, these uh, these scams, whether it be a bank or a, or a, like I said, a Western Union or something like that, so.
Great, thank you.
Um, I, in light of the uh, the disparate response perceived by many, um, people in the community, we, we've heard from um, members of our community, uh, whether they're black indigenous and people of color or members of the LGBTQ plus community, that there are times when they feel unsafe, unsafe even here in Hingham. Um, have you done any thinking about what you might do in Hingham if you were to become the chief to help these marginalized community members feel more safe in their community?
Absolutely. So uh, you know, in, in fact, we, we did something recently where we set up a, a dedicated phone, uh, a phone line and a dedicated email um, to our civil rights officer. Um, where people could reach out directly if it, you know, if, obviously if it's an emergency, we want people to, to call, uh, you know, nine one one, uh, or the business line and request a, a police response. But uh, something if they're not feeling safe, they feel threatened or, or otherwise, like you said, marginalized, uh, they can reach out to our civil rights officer, uh, directly with that phone number, uh, directly with that email that, that we provided. And, and it is on our website, it's right under, right under civil rights officer. Uh, and they can have a, a point of contact in the department where they can, where they can talk, uh, talk to this officer, sort of get some, some feedback, some advice. Uh, you know, and if, if a crime has been uh, committed or the person's been a victim of, you know, any sort of a hate crime or anything else, that, that they'll follow up with that person directly and, and sort of see it through. So uh, but it's a resource to the community. Uh, it's something we instituted uh, very recently in the past couple of weeks. And it, things like that, I think, can go a long way with the community and, and helping people, um, you know, that might otherwise feel, um, you know, marginalized or, or vulnerable.
Uh, and I appreciate how quickly you followed up on that suggestion in, in having it be implemented. Uh, Bill, a, a final question in this, in this area?
Uh, sure. I, um, a- as your learning acting chief, uh, the Hingham Police Department is very much involved with um, uh, our town boards and the function of our town government. Um, in your time as entering interim chief, you have had the opportunity to be the voice of the department at various town boards in the, and I'm sorry, in the decision-making of various town boards. Can you describe a time where you have been able to make a positive impact on this decision-making process to the benefit of the town?
Sure. So um, you know, to town boards, I'm, I'm involved with um, several. So some that comes to mind right away is the, is the Public Safety uh, Building Committee. Um, you know, doing the public information sessions, uh, interviews, tours for committee members, et cetera. Um, but maybe um, something worth mentioning that, that, you know, has a direct tie to the community would be, um, you know, the COVID reopening groups that, that, um, that I was on, uh, where I worked with the various uh, town departments and, you know, other members of the committee to ensure that businesses that are impacted um, by the COVID restrictions that were implied, that they were given the opportunity to, to reopen while ensuring the safety of, of their staffs and, and their customers. I, I think that's probably uh, the place where, where I was able to have uh, the most impact on, on a board that I'm a part of.
Okay. Um, we're, we're pretty much running sort of on time here. Um, this, this kind of last area of questions, we've sort of labeled this miscellaneous. So uh, Bill and Joe, this is an opportunity for, you know, a question that you haven't already asked. Um, uh, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll give everybody the opportunity for a couple of questions. I, I'm gonna lead off and I only have one question in this area. Um, and that is, uh, you've had the opportunity to work under and learn from um, a number of wonderful former Hingham police chiefs. And I just wondered if you look back on that experience, um, if there were one or two things that you've learned from past chiefs and how that'll shape how you approach the job if selected?
Uh, that's, that is a, a good point. So I've, I was hired by uh, by Chief Browski. Um, I worked for Chief Carlson, uh, Chief Mills, Chief Perino and Chief uh, Glenn Olson most recently. So um, you know, I, I think I've taken something from, from each of them. Um, you know, as well as the, the, the various leaders that I've worked with, um, you know, in my time here at the department. So um, you know, the sense of, a sense of sort of uh, community involvement. Um, you know, you, you've got that from, from pretty much, you know, all of them. Um, you know, a, a good leader was, was uh, was Chief Carlson, who sort of, um, you know, was, was another person who led by example. Uh, Chief Perino had, had a lot of involvement in, you know, in the schools. He was an SRO, he was uh, you know, a traffic sergeant. And so sort of taking that, uh, sort of that aspect of, of, you know, of his career. Uh, Chief Olson sort of had, um, you know, a lot of involvement with, with committees and organizations around town and sort of that whole networking aspect. So uh, you know, I, I think I've taken something from, from every single, every single chief and every single uh, you know, supervisor that I, that I've worked for here, you know, sort of along the way to make me who, who I am today.
Thank you. Uh, Joe?
Well, Mary, I thought you were going to ask him, whi- which one was his favorite chief? And that would be a really tough one. There's no good answer there. Um, but I, I want to go back to, um, you know, we've talked about, you know, some of the social struggles, um, racial issues in the community, but I want to turn it back to the department. How do you make sure that social, political, racial, racial turmoil that is present in the country is not causing internal struggles within the H- Hingham Police Department? Is there a need for increased conversations with officers or other employees to address inherent biases or other, other issues that your offers, your officers may face sometimes in silence? And is there anything that your Board of Selectmen can do to support you in that effort?
Uh, thank, that, that is a, a, a good and, and relevant question with everything going on around us. So um, you know, a- all of our officers um, are, are going through fair and impartial policing uh, training. Um, we have, uh, we've just put um, some people through uh, the Train the Trainer training uh, to come back and train our officers here on uh, implicit biases. Um, you know, and that's also going to be a part of their uh, annual in-service training as well. Um, so I think just by being able to openly talk about these issues and um, you know, freely discuss them in these trainings and, and sort of a safe environment. Um, you know, I think that's the best way to, to, to uh, to deal with them. It, it's going to be a um, you know, a big, uh, part of this uh, training going forward in, in service this year. Um, so I, I think the key is training, the key is communication. Um, and, you know, I think the support of the board is, is, has always been there with uh, with providing resources uh, that we need for, you know, to, to send our officers to these trainings, like this Train the Trainer program, which is a, an intensive uh, course that, that the officers went to to, to sort of uh, be able to come back here and bring that training back to, you know, all the members here at the department.
Thank you.
Bill?
Department is a relatively, uh, embarrassing, some other towns or cities, it's a relatively smaller department. You have a lot of younger officers who have master's degrees and college degrees and motivated. But because of the size of the department, the, the promotional opportunities are, are somewhat limited in, in the town of Hingham. Unlike a Waymouth or Quincy or even a Brockton. How as the chief, are you going to be able to um, retain these, these, these younger, strong officers and keep them in the department? Um, even if they don't have the benefit of becoming a sergeant or lieutenant, moving up the ranks like you did?
So I always want to, want to um, you know, well, like I said earlier, like I, when I got on, my, my dream was to become chief. So uh, I, you sort of, I want to, I want to, you know, to, to have that, you know, sort of inspiration in, in them if they, if they want to follow that path and, and, and um, move up, move up through the ranks. Um, but, but also there's other ways that we can, that we can offer um, sort of advancement and movement for our officers. Um, you know, there's specialty positions here, there's, there's the, you know, for example, there's the Traffic Safety Division. Um, where officers are trained in, you know, sort of accident, uh, accident investigations all the way up through accident reconstruction. Um, there's the, we have two K nine officers, we have uh, the school resource officers that I mentioned, we have detectives, we have officers on uh, federal task forces. Um, we have Field Training Officer Program and we have uh, the Old Colony um, Regional Group. And we also have the Metropolitan Law Enforcement Council, where officers can get involved in things that they, that, you know, normally uh, we wouldn't be able to, to provide, but as part of a, you know, a regional and, and department-wide um, you know, initiative, we can get them into these different areas. So uh, for example, you know, they could get into uh, you know, Crisis Negotiations, Tosses and Negotiations Team. Uh, they could get into um, you know, so the, sort of the search and rescue, uh, Incident Response Team Coordinator area that I was in in Metroplex. So there's different ways to provide uh, you know, opportunities and, and trainings for them that, that will keep our officers motivated and interested uh, and sort of uh, take care of that retention uh, area that you mentioned.
Uh, Joe, did you have another question?
Um, yeah, I just, just one thing I wanted to follow up on. And it's a theme throughout this uh, conversation we've had this evening, which is how important communication is, uh, communication within the police department and the communication between the community and the police department. Uh, in your view, does this department currently do enough in communicating with the public? And what methods of communication do you find most effective for interacting with the public? Websites, email, phone calls, holding public meetings, uh, communicating with those who are not necessarily online all the time? What do you find most effective and where do you see this growing over the next couple of years?
So I, I don't think there's any one uh, real answer, right? It, it's a combination of pretty much everything you mentioned. So uh, but social media obviously is, is a big method of communication. It's something that, that most people have access to, whether it's on uh, their telephone, um, whether it's on their home computer. Um, you know, uh, or whether it's in, in the newspaper from, from, you know, public information uh, releases that we put out. Um, so uh, I think engaging uh, via social media is, is um, is probably our, e- especially right now with, with COVID, it, it's one of our only ways to, to effectively communicate with people. Um, you know, and sort of get our message out. Uh, our website i- is also, uh, we try to keep that current, we try to keep that up to date with uh, with new information on there. Um, so uh, there's also links for, for people that don't have um, you know, uh, their own Twitter account.
Uh, interim chief, interim chief, if I could ask you, um, we just lost your audio for about the last 15 seconds. If, if maybe you could um, just uh, just recap for a second, thank you.
Sure, sorry.
Sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Communications.
Yes, we can, yes.
I know. First my lights went out, now you can't hear me, so I don't know what's going on. And I thought by coming to the office, I'd have a better commu- a better uh, internet connection. Um, so I, I don't know where you lost me, but uh, you know, I, I think uh, social media, our social media presence is, is key. I think um, our, our, in our um, webpage is a, a good source of information, a good communication um, uh, point. And, and we have our, our Facebook and Twitter accounts embedded directly in those for folks that don't have their own uh, social media accounts. They can just go to HPD.org and they can look at our Twitter feeds, they can look at our Facebook feeds and, and still have that same experience and get that same information that we're pushing out uh, via our social media channel. So uh, there's that. Obviously, uh, in-person meetings are, are huge, um, putting a, a, you know, a, a name, uh, and a face to a name. And um, sort of, you know, you know, one thing that, that I want to do, I, I really want to, to bring other members of, of this organization and this team uh, to the public. So I, I, while I need to be a face of the department, I don't want to be the only face of the department. I think we have a lot of talented people here, uh, that can bring, um, you know, their, their skills uh, and, and benefit the, the various departments and the community. Uh, and I think you've seen that with me, uh, you know, in some of the committees, uh, where, where we've had, I've had different people speak uh, on my behalf and, and represent the department. So I think that's another uh, benefit to the community, that they can start to meet um, different members of the team rather than just saying me talking all the time.
And, and if I can just follow up, do you find that your communications with the schools has been effective?
Yeah, so our, our school resource officers are, you know, are very highly regarded. I, I can't go to any other agency and, and not hear about them. So uh, when I run into other school resource officers or other, or other kids, they always uh, refer to, you know, uh, Officer Ramsey or, or Officer Ford or, or uh, Officer Solituri at the, at the um, you know, at the Collaborative or Officer McGillicuddy, um, or, you know, Officer Lowp, at the Collaborative. So they, they have a big impact on our community, they have a big impact on, on the kids and they sort, sort of serve as a, as a role model for them and, and put a face to, to policing sort of. Because they deal with them every day, they see them when they're getting to school, they, they're, they're able to talk to them, they're, they're a resource to them if they're having problems with, you know, other students or, or at home or something that they just want to talk to with the officers. And, you know, it, they're sort of a mentor to them at the school. So uh, I, I, I think our, our school resource officers are, are very highly regarded in, in town.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, Bill, final question?
And the job for six months now, you've had a six-month job interview. So you've seen um, what the job's all about, you've kind of had a probably different view of the department and, and a ve- very different view of the town. Um, if you become the permanent chief, what changes will you implement or um, what things would you address?
All right, so, so some, some things that I, that I really want to, to continue and sort of see through is things that sort of took um, the sort of, the breaks were put on during, during COVID. So uh, one of my, one of the main goals that I would like to see through is, is that process of accreditation that I, that we talked about. So um, you know, that, that brings, you know, a sense of uh, not really legitimacy, but that, that sort of legitimacy, uh, best practices, um, you know, uh, policy procedures sort, sort of brings them up to, to uh, you know, a, a standard that, that's held across uh, the state or nationally, depending on which level of accreditation uh, you're seeking. So um, you know, that, that's one thing that I, that I really uh, want to see through and I want to, I want to, that should, that if I'm lucky enough to get this position, that's, that's the thing that I, that I want to uh, push forward. Um, you know, as fast as possible and get it, get us up to speed on that.
Okay. Um, interim chief, you have spent the last hour answering a lot of different questions on a variety of subjects. And I thank you for that. Before concluding this interview, uh, I wanted to give you an opportunity to make any, any final remarks to the board uh, or to members of the public who have joined us this evening.
Um, I, I just, I want to thank you for, as, as the board, for giving me this opportunity. Uh, this has really been sort of the culmination of, of many years of, of dedication. Uh, and I look forward to the challenges and, and the possibilities that, that lie ahead. Um, I, I really want to thank the men and women of the Hingham Police Department for their continued professionalism, their commitment to the residents of this town, you know, and without their hard work and support that, that, you know, well, it just wouldn't be possible where, where we're at today. And I, you know, I, I really want to thank them as well. And thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Um, Tom, I think I just would uh, want to conclude. Tom, I think I just would want to conclude this portion of the agenda. If you could just please summarize for the public what will happen next in this process?
Sure. So the, the next steps will be for the Board of Selectmen to include an agenda item on their February ninth Selectmen's meeting agenda to consider a potential appointment to the position of police chief if you find that you have a qualified candidate.
Excellent. Again, interim chief, thank you so much for joining us. Thank you for stepping into the role and, and, and holding it for the last several months. And, and in particular for all your efforts in leading the department as we all work together to respond to COVID. I would also just thank you for the work that you did to develop and present the budget. I know you're going to have to go into the advisory committee now after this, so you, you have a little, you have a few miles to go before you sleep. But again, I'd, I'd like to thank you for putting yourself forward for consideration. And I also appreciate the, the very candid answers that you gave us this evening. So thank you.
Thank you very much as well.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a level, level letter of support for the Hingham Municipal Light Plant to pursue a grant opportunity for electric vehicle charging stations on town property. I'm going to turn this over to Assistant Town Administrator Michelle Monsagore.
Thanks very much, Mary, and I believe we're joined by Tom Morahan from HMLP tonight. So Tom approached our office a few months ago about trying to partner with the town so that we can install some electric vehicle charging stations at a few municipally owned properties around town. He had identified a few spots in the Station Street parking lot downtown, and then we were also looking at Town Hall as a possible second location, but there are some issues there because as you know, parking's already a little bit tight at Town Hall for the current uses we have there. In the meantime, some grant opportunities through Mass DEP came up that HMLP would like to pursue that would allow them to install charging stations at no cost, I believe. And these stations would be open to the public, HMLP would install them, would own and maintain the charging stations and then would collect the revenues from people with EVs parking and, and charging there. Tom, I think can speak a little bit more about the grant opportunity, but what HMLP is asking us to do tonight is to support them in this grant application. Give preliminary permission to move forward with installing electric vehicle charging stations in two locations. The second one, which, of which would be determined by the Board of Selectmen and HMLP at a later time. And the final installation would be subject to a license agreement from the Board of Selectmen and any necessary town permits. But overall, as a green community, we're, we're excited about this opportunity and want to find a way to support more energy efficient and environmentally friendly modes of transportation in town.
Great. Mr. Morahan, thank you for being here this evening and welcome.
Thanks for having me.
You know, what, what would you, Michelle's given us a really great overview, but you know, perhaps you could just speak to a little bit about the, the grant opportunity. You know, what the process is looking like, potential funding awards, timing?
So, so the, you know, we've been talking about putting charges in for a number of, oh, months now, if not a year. And then now there's an opportunity through the state where as long as it's, it's on public land and it's accessible to the public, obviously. We can get a grant for up to $50,000 towards the installation and purchase of charging stations. Obviously, there, there's not, there's limited funds for this, so what we'd like to do is get in, in line. You know, and try to get the funds, you know, regardless of getting the funds, you know, we were going to do this anyway, but this is just a, it's a great opportunity to, to get the state to pay for that for us.
Okay. Joe, any questions for either for Michelle or for Tom?
No, I mean, I think this is absolutely a move in the right direction. I know that there were charging stations that were put in at Derby Street Shops. And then I think they were removed, this was not a town project.
Yeah, that was, I think that was when Tesla was at Derby Street Shops.
Right.
I don't think they ever put them in, as far as I know, I haven't been here that long, but, so that was prior to my arrival. But my understanding was they were going to go down the, the back of the lot by Burton's, but I don't, I don't think that ever happened from my understanding anyway.
Do, do you know if there are plans to put them in, in other locations in town on private property?
So we're working with the Flatley Company, we're talking to them about some locations over on 3A by the, crossing the shipyard. I know there are some at Linden Ponds. I've been told there's some at the Beale Street Apartments that just went in. I, I, I have not seen them, but I've heard there's some over there. And then I just read something where Russell Electric has installed a couple of charging stations at their, their headquarters. So, yeah, we, we'd like to work with, you know, you know, private developers and things around town that are, that are looking to put them in.
That's, that's good for people to know, and I, I think it's a step that the town should be taking. I've got no questions. Thank you.
Bill, questions?
No questions, I think it's a step in the right direction. I think the proposed location is a good one as well, so nothing else, thank you.
I would, I would concur with my colleagues. Is there anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment about this letter of support for pursuing the grant funding? Tom, when might we hear if this grant is awarded?
I'm going to be working with our, a company that we, we work with, they run our EV program and our energy efficiency, Energy New England. They've, they've applied for a number of these grants in different communities. So I'll be working with them in the next week or two to, to get the grants in, the, you know, the paperwork in. And I thought that, you know, we would hear back within sometime between the end of March and April.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, we have, we have to actually take a vote to approve this letter, so Bill or Joe, I would accept the motion.
Take the motion to approve the, the letter of support for Hingham Municipal Light Plant to apply for the Mass EV IP Public Access Charging Program Grant to install electric vehicle charging stations on town property.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you. Tom, thank you for joining us tonight. Michelle, thank you for, thank you for the overview and please keep us posted on, 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 on whether or not that's successful.
We certainly will and we'll be back to when we find another location that's appropriate to bring by you.
Great.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is volume three of Inside Town Finances, which Michelle is going to display. And volume three of Inside Town Finances actually focuses on one of the smaller pieces of our revenue pie. Oh, Michelle, do you want to put up the, the PDF? Okay, we can do it this way. No, we can, we can do it this way. Yep, this is okay. So, so excluded debt is about 3% of our total revenue. And just so everybody knows, excluded debt is a temporary tax increase. As its name suggests, it's excluded from the limits of Proposition Two and a Half. And it's typically used to pay debt service, which is principal plus interest payments on money that the town borrows to finance a specific project. When we have excluded debt, we have to say what it's going to be used for. And a debt exclusion requires both a two-thirds vote from town meeting and it requires a majority ballot vote. And in general, when Hingham issues excluded debt, we do that for about 20 years. Michelle, if you could go to the next slide. So this is just a look at the outstanding excluded debt that we have for the town. And so what you'll see is that there are six projects. You can see the outstanding principal and interest, that's what we owe. You can see for this fiscal year 21, what that debt service payment is. And you can see the, the fiscal year in which the debt expires. So at the beginning of this fiscal year, the total principal and interest payments that are outstanding are $43,871,635. So just about $43 million of excluded debt. And all but $30,750 of that is for school projects. And just as an aside, there's been a lot of talk about per pupil education expenses. And when Hingham or when any community calculates their per pupil education expenses, they don't include this excluded debt. And, and just to give you kind of an order of magnitude, you know, we have about 4,000 children in the Hingham Public School System. So this excluded debt would translate to about $1,000, you know, per student. For this year, for this fiscal year, the debt service payment we have, that's kind of like our mortgage payment, is $4,178,747. And money that the town collects from meals tax and from some bond premiums helps reduce the taxpayer cost to about $3.4 million. And, you know, just to put that a little bit of context, so as a town, we have to pay $3.4 million. And to the average homeowner, if your home is assessed at $877,000, which is the average, this excluded debt this year adds about $376 to your tax bill. Your average tax bill is about $10,000 and, and this increases it. Michelle, if you could go to the next slide, please. So this is, this is just a look at what happens to our excluded debt. So right now you see on the very far left in 2021, our, our debt payment is about $3.4 million. And what's really important to point out is by 2038, it's all paid off. The mortgages are paid off on all of these projects. Now, you notice that those bars are going down and those bars go down year over year for a couple of reasons. The first reason is that debt is retired. So some projects, for example, this past, this next year is the last year we're paying for the renovations on Town Hall. So that's going to cause the number to drop. But also the big reason that the number drops is because when Hingham finances debt, we do something called level principal debt. And the best way to think about that is if you think about your standard mortgage, you probably have a level payment mortgage. So for 30 years, you pay the same amount every year, every, 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 every month with your mortgage every year. Level principal debt is structured so that you pay the same amount of principal every month. And the reason that that's important in municipal finance is that the earlier reduction of outstanding principal means a lower interest cost over the life of the loan. A lot of AAA bond rated communities issue level principal debt for that very reason. So when we finance a project with excluded debt and we use level principal debt, our year one debt service payment is the highest of, of the life of the loan. And in year two, it gets a little lower, year three, it gets a little bit lower. Now, as I mentioned, by 2038, all of the outstanding debt that we have will be retired. We have a lot of debt capacity in the town of Hingham. The amount of debt that we carry is well within our financial policy. But I think we also know that there are a lot of capital projects that we're talking about potentially taking on in this town. Foster School, a public safety facility. If we were to renovate the senior center, we would probably issue excluded debt. So what we should expect and, and when voters are asked if, if they would be interested in issuing new excluded debt for these projects, what will happen is that, is that some of the debt that is declining over the next several years will be replaced with new debt. And the earliest that we would, that we would see the excluded debt hitting for foster school and the public safety facility is in about 2025. And, and I would also point out that in 2029, again, we retire a, a big piece of the debt. So as, you know, for, for members of the community, just like you do in your household, we look at how much debt we have. We want to make sure that we can pay the bills. And as we take on new debt, we, we not just, we don't always just look at the cost of the new debt, but we also look at the obligations that we have. So that's a little quick recap on excluded debt. Joe or Bill, I, I don't know if you have any questions?
No, I mean, that was a, a great presentation, just, but to summarize it or to put it a little differently. When people have mortgages, the monthly mortgage payment is interest and principal, and usually at the beginning, it's almost all interest and very little principal.
Correct.
And what you're saying is that we don't do that in town. Our, our payment is that principal amount remains the same and it's the interest portion that's actually declining.
Correct. And at the, and at the end of the loan, just like with your mortgage, when, when you always look, you know, when you sign those loan papers, it, it always says, this is the mortgage amount, this is how much interest it is, and this is the total, and it's always a really huge number. Level principal debt results in, in total lower interest cost. And that's why we do it in the town, because that way it's, it's a, it's less of an impact on the taxpayers.
And it requires real fiscal discipline. So this is, this is terrific. Thank you.
Bill, any, anything to add?
This is great. Thank you for doing this. This is, I, I, this is really helpful to me, I know, and I appreciate you doing it. Just a quick question, if, and I know this is all hypothetical, but looking at a potential of fall 2022 to move on, you know, what, what, what's in our, you know, what's on our screen, the bigger projects, foster primarily, public safety facility also possibly. Why wouldn't we experience that debt till 2025?
Oh, thank, yeah, thank you for asking. So typically, and, and Jean Montgomery can describe this really well because she's such a wizard at this. Typically, when we are, are borrowing for a capital project, while the project is under construction, we finance that with short-term debt. And the reason is, it, the reason is twofold. First of all, we only want to borrow how much it costs to build the building. So if, if, for example, we say we think it's going to cost $50 million, we don't want to borrow $50 million because if it only costs 45 to build, we, we don't want to borrow more than we need. And the other, you know, the other reason that we typically, that we typically hold off on that, yeah, that, that, that's the main reason. So if we look at Foster School, for example, if there's a special town meeting in the fall of 22, it's going to take about 18 to 24 months to build the school. And the thought is that, that it will be occupied in, I believe it's, it's 2024, which is fiscal year 25. So that's when the bill would hit.
And just to add, add to that, so during that short-term financing, we are doing interest-only payments with no.
Right, it's an interest-only payment, so, so the debt service payment is, is very low. That's correct. That's correct. The, the other thing that our treasure collector tries to do is, you know, when you go out to issue debt in the market, there are some transaction costs. And one of the things that we try to do as a town is look to see how to minimize those costs. Because again, those are taxpayer dollars. So for example, if, if we have, if, if we're going to be issuing a good amount of debt in 2024 and maybe we've got a project in 2023 we want to issue, we might keep that in short term and bundle it all together because the bigger offering would actually potentially afford us more competitive interest rates. I, I should just also mention that with all this excluded debt, you know, just like we all do with our mortgages. You know, we monitor interest rates and we look at, gee, is it, you know, could I save some money by refinancing? All of our excluded debt, I'm pretty sure, is financed at a long-term rate of about 2%. And that again speaks to the town's triple A bond rating. Um, but but we do, as a matter of course, just look to make sure. That we don't have an opportunity. Okay, good. Um. Questions from the public on excluded debt? I should just also mention, um, I was going to mention it in in selection reports, but while we're here. Um, I want to thank Harbor Media who has a um. Harbor Media has agreed to film inside town finances. So we're creating these little five minute videos on each of these topics. And yesterday I had the opportunity. To um, record volume one and volume two and volume three. Uh, which is why I have a new screen background. Um, but I just want to thank Harbor Media, because again. Um, you know, for members of the public, your your Board of Selectmen wants to provide you with information about municipal finance. Um, while it's always a good idea to have it. We do know that in particular with the pandemic, as we. Move forward towards town meeting, there are going to be a lot of important financial decisions the town has to make. We understand our responsibility and our accountability. To give you information about town finances that will inform the decisions that you will make at town meeting. So uh, you know, that's the purpose, and we're grateful to Harbor Media for. Helping broaden the exposure of what we hope is import, is is helpful information for people. Um, okay, so next.
Before you go on, uh, Bill. Just be prepared, because she's going to be, Mary's going to be giving us a quiz on this.
Oh, big, big quiz. Yeah, yeah.
What I better study.
Yeah.
Um, Mary, I think Dr. Gallo may have a question.
Oh, I I beg your pardon. Um. I recognize Dr. Gallo. Could you please um give your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Dorothy Gallo, One Voluntio Road. Um, I really tuned in tonight to particularly for this presentation, but more importantly to uh. To mention that I think this is a a a great idea. Um, a lot of these concepts about how we fund things and debt and budget and all of that. Just aren't, people aren't aware of it. And all of a sudden, they arrive at a town meeting or they arrive at the ballot box and and need to have information. So doing this is terrific. I happened, just happened to see the one uh on the short, uh, the um. Um, local fees and such last time, and then I saw you were going to talk about uh. Um, the um. Excluded debt this time. I would make one comment and one um. Piece of information. Uh, the the comment is that uh with respect to the school projects. When we're talking about uh excluded debt and the vote that needs, that, and that wraps into the second. Uh, question is, could we, uh, could you go over for the, for the audience, just so it's part of this record? The, how many votes have to occur? Um, when we uh vote to choose excluded debt, but but also with the newest, newest now goes back uh. You know, to uh more than a decade. Uh, school building authority process is one where we have a pay as you go method. So periodically during the project, while the project is going on. Um, we can submit and are asked to submit through a very uh complicated process. Uh invoices and bills and um, and they are reimbursed to the town. As we go along, as opposed to waiting till the end of a project before the town might get reimbursement. So it does make a difference. In how the debt is structured uh for our school building project is a little bit different from how the debt will be structured from um a school.
Yeah, thank you. So um, to answer the first question. A debt exclusion, because you know, we're borrowing a lot of money and we're raising people's taxes. So that requires a two thirds vote at town meeting. And then it requires a majority, a majority vote at the ballot box. So it needs, it needs two votes. And um, as Dr. Gallo mentioned. Um, with school projects, we've been so fortunate to be able to partner with the state and bring some of our tax dollars in to build. East School and the Middle School. And um. It it, in fact, um, one of the projects, and and this is the last year that it is uh on our debt schedule. Are the two thousand one high school and South Elementary renovations that. Dr. Gallo is more familiar with than any of us. We are still getting money from the state for those projects. And um, under the new MSBA program. We get it as we build the school, which just is 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 helpful in in so many uh different ways. Um, I I'd also point out, and Dr. Gallo, please cor- correct, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but. I believe that under the MSBA program. That the amount the town meeting approves is actually the total cost of the project. So for example, for the middle school, I think it was sixty million dollars. But we also stated that the town's portion of that. Was about thirty two million dollars. Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
Yes.
Yeah, and and I.
And the town, the town is paying uh the net.
Yes.
But we get the reimbursement periodically as as opposed to just when the project is all done.
Yeah, it's it's it's, it's nice to get those big checks in as we're, as we're going ahead and. And and building things. So um, you know, thank, thank you for the feedback. We uh, we intend to make Inside Finances a a weekly. Um, a a weekly event, because there are a lot of different topics that we think are important to cover. As as we kind of continue our march to um. Uh, to town meetings. So um, next week, we're gonna, the the subject is um. Is is the sort of assessment process, and how do we take the tax levy that gets calculated? And how does that get kind of turned into the property tax bills that we all receive? So we're gonna spend a little time, a little more time on the revenue and the tax piece. Um, Bill, something to add?
Mary, just a quick question for you. Um. Why wasn't the purchase of the water company excluded debt? Is it because it's an enterprise fund?
So the purchase of the water company was not excluded debt because the act was, that's, that's correct. That's correct.
Good.
Um, but but I would say that again, but the purchase of the water company did require a two thirds vote.
Yes.
Because that was the statute that was, the the eighteen seventy nine statute said. That it needed a two thirds vote. But because it was not excluded debt, it didn't need a ballot vote. Um, anytime, anytime we borrow money. Uh, whether it is excluded or something we'll talk about in a few weeks, which is non excluded debt. Um, anytime we borrow money as a town, that always requires a two thirds vote. Um, that was the case with the Benjamin Lincoln House this past year. Uh, that will be the case for uh the Plymouth River Windows at this year's town meeting. And it was the case with the water company.
Right.
Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda uh is the COVID nineteen update. Tom?
Hey. Just want to make sure I'm unmuted. Okay, so the COVID nineteen update for January twenty sixth. Um, so regarding data, according to the public health data from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. Released last week, the town's designation is yellow, indicating a medium risk of spread in the community. The average daily incidence rate for the town of Hingham is sixty four point zero per one hundred thousand residents. Slightly down from the seventy point eight the prior week. According to the DPA, according to the DPH, there have been two hundred and fifteen new cases of COVID nineteen in the community over the past fourteen days. There have been a total of one thousand two hundred forty two cases in Hingham since the start of the pandemic. As of today, confirmed COVID nineteen cases in Massachusetts had climbed to four hundred and eighty one thousand six hundred and seventeen. Please continue to avoid high risk activities, especially indoor social gatherings. In addition, all Massachusetts residents remain under orders from the governor to wear masks at all times while in public. So regarding the vaccine rollout. This week, the town is continuing to hold vaccination clinics for home healthcare workers and non COVID facing healthcare workers. As part of the phase one of the state's vaccine rollout plan. The town is already beginning to hold, be, is ready to begin holding vaccination clinics for phase two. Uh, individuals as soon as we receive sufficient vaccine supplies from the state. Earlier this week, the Baker Polito administration announced updates to plan, to plans for phase two, which will begin on Monday, February first. Individuals seventy five or older will now be the first priority group in phase two. Individuals sixty five and older and individuals with two comorbidities are now the second priority group in phase two. We understand and recognize that these vaccines are important to so many of our residents. And we will continue to keep the community updated on the progress of vaccine distribution as part of phases two and three. As we receive additional vaccine supplies from the state. We will communicate via our official website, social media channels, the local press. Email blasts and more to schedule people for appointments. Additionally, the town's elder services department will continue, well, excuse me, will be conducting outreach. To our senior population to ensure that they are made aware of clinics and to provide assistance with registration if needed. Much of the guidelines and vaccine distribution capabilities are controlled by the State Department of Public Health. And we encourage all residents to continue to follow the state's official COVID nineteen website for the most up to date information. This page can be found by visiting mass.gov and clicking on the COVID nineteen link. Many questions can be answered on this page. Anyone with questions about how to get vaccine, how to get a vaccine, should visit the mass.gov. Forward slash COVID vaccine to find their phase and priority group. With those questions about the vaccine. With those with questions about the vaccine may also contact the state by emailing COVID nineteen vaccine plan MA dash. Uh, at mass.gov. We appreciate the public's patience during this very difficult and busy time for us all. As always, residents are encouraged to visit the Hingham Town website for information on current data and resources. That site is hangham-ma.gov forward slash COVID nineteen. And lastly, anyone with questions about the vaccine who was unable to find the information they needed online. Can email the Hingham Health Department at covidquestions@hangham-ma.gov. And I would just like to uh really stress for the whole uh whole community to understand that. The the Department of Public Health um is is doing their best, they're working through this um, this vaccine rollout. And it is a, to say this is a fluid process is an understatement. It is um, that there are uh uh changes and tweaks to the rollout plan seemingly daily. Um, so again, please uh monitor that website if you have concerns. And we will do our best to uh notify people of the situation as as we have it.
Thank you. Uh, Joe, any questions for Tom on the COVID nineteen update?
And uh, Tom, it was very thorough. I just, um, one question. Uh, the consistent message. That I heard in terms of getting information or asking questions was go online or send an email. Um, there is a group. Um, in Hingham that does not access information online. So no website. No email. What is the best way? For them to communicate, for them to obtain information? And will the town be reaching out to them in a way other than websites and emails?
So we will be, we will be contacting them via our, or. Many of them via our um, our. Council on Aging, the senior center um staff will be calling seniors and talking to them, and again, offering to help them. Um, to register for a vaccine uh when it's available. Um, so we will be reaching out directly to them via phone. Um, I'm hesitant to tell the general public to call the Public Health Department, because I don't want Susan to quit tomorrow. But uh, it's, 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 as you can imagine, everyone wants to know when they can get the shot. And um, and right now, we're doing the best we can to get it out. We have very, very limited access to vaccine. Um, so uh, you know, we're, we're, we're rolling it out as quickly as we can and within the guidelines of the state. So. If they have questions, can't get to an email, can't get to our, our, our uh website and haven't heard from the. Department of Public Health, excuse me, from the um senior center staff, then uh they can uh probably reach out to our, our. Health Department at that point. But I would ask everyone to please uh take advantage of those other opportunities before that happens. Our staff is really stretched very thin.
No, I, I mean, Susan Sarni and her group have really been um above and beyond. Uh, and Tom, you and and the entire town administration have really been pushing this, uh, and uh, we all appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill, anything to add?
Yeah, Tom and Michelle, thanks so much for your efforts to ensue as well to continue to push out the vaccine. You know, as as we're seeing new strains of the virus develop and. And it becoming more contagious and possibly more deadly, it just. Uh, keep pushing with your efforts, Tom, and you know, whatever we can do to support. Um, the local effort, you know, please let us know.
Uh, thank you, and will do. And I, and I would tell the public that, I mean, if they don't know already. Uh, the three of you, the the board, the Board of Selectmen in this community have been extraordinarily um supportive and helpful along the way. So um, thank you to the three of you for that support.
I I would just add that, you know, um, whether, whether you read the, you know, the New York Times or the Boston Globe. Uh, or the Hingham Journal or the Hingham Anchor. Uh, the challenges that we face as a nation are how to get the vaccines that have been produced. Into people's arms. Um, and to the extent that the state does not get. The supply of vaccines that it's looking for. Uh, that impacts, you know, what communities receive. Um. It's our hope that over the next few weeks, the, there will be improvement in, you know, the whole kind of vaccine delivery system. Uh, and I'm very grateful, Tom, to to you, to Michelle and to the entire team. For being able to demonstrate to the, to the state. That when that supply, you know, becomes more prevalent. Hingham is prepared to do our part to vaccinate our fellow citizens. Um, I would also just uh thank people for their patience and understanding. Um. As 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 we move, as we move through this. And I would also remind people that the testing facility on Cushing Street is still open. Uh, there was a technical problem yesterday that affected many testing centers, uh, including ours, but that was resolved. So uh, we as a town will continue to operate that testing site. Uh, for the foreseeable future.
Mary, do you mind if I just add one item that I forgot to mention?
Please.
I just wanted to highlight, so if you all remember in past COVID reports from previous meetings. Um, a few weeks ago, we were able to uh begin the inoculation process for our first responders, again, per the state's guidelines. Uh, so that has happened, and and what that has done is allowed us to schedule these vaccination clinics. Using our um, our paramedics from the, from the Hingham Fire Department, your own paramedics. Will be, uh, have A, raise their hand to help. And B, that, uh, we, we know them, these are our, our neighbors, these are the folks that 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 come to our house when we need them. So um, they'll, they're going to be the uh, the folks that are at the front line and 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 able to um, to. To get our shots in these, in in the arms, right, is to, to help us, uh, to vaccinate us. So. Um, I'm just thrilled with their, their support, and um, I just wanted to call out Chief Murphy, who's on the line tonight. And his team uh for for all of their willingness to help and support.
Thank you, and and thank you to Chief Murphy. Uh, anyone in the public have a question or wish to make a comment with respect to the COVID nineteen update? Okay, seeing none. Uh, public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, uh, we have a couple of appointments. Tom, could you just explain uh for, to the public? Um, why a Hingham Board of Selector meeting is about to appoint a couple of health citizens?
So.
Do this every day.
Right. So as part of the acquisition of the water company, um, Hingham set a structure whereby we would create. The Hingham Board of Selectmen would create what we're, what is being, being referred to as the Citizens Advisory Board. And that board will be um, av- uh, available to the public to. To um, be their liaisons, to their, their voices uh to the Board of Selectmen um, and the Board of Water Commissioners in this case. So um, to that end, uh, if you remember, the, the town of Hingham um has. So to that end, if you remember, the, the town of Hingham has three seats on this six-person board. The town of Hull has two seats and the town of Cohasset has one seat, roughly related to the populations of the communities.
And and so, Tom, do you just want to mention how the names for the board's consideration came to us?
Sorry, yes. So we had asked, several months ago, we had asked, or is it years now, Mary? I can't remember anymore. Many months ago. That's right. We had reached out to those communities, Hull and Cohasset, and asked their Boards of Selectmen to, to prepare and recommend names to the Board of, to the Hingham Board of Selectmen.
Yep. Okay, so Joe or Bill, I would, I would accept motions. And if I may, I might suggest to the board that we have, we have two seats to appoint. One is a three-year term, one is a two-year term. My recommendation would be that, that we appoint Mr. Streuzieri to the three-year term because he was very involved. He was the Hull representative to the selection of the Water System Operator, and his assistance there was very helpful. So that would, that would be my suggestion if, if, if that's acceptable to both of you.
Mary, that makes sense. Perhaps either you or Tom can just give us a brief order or two on Donna and John and their background?
I, I'm happy to do that, Mary, if you'd like.
Please.
So John Streuzieri is a longtime resident of the town of Hingham. He is also, he works for I'm sorry, Hull. I'm used to saying Hingham, ages of Hull. And he is an employee of the town. He is there, he's an engineer that works, I believe, in their sewer department. And again, like Mary said, he was instrumental in the selection of our Water System Operator on the, on the review team for that project. John is a very knowledgeable person and, and I think he'll be helpful. So our, our second candidate, given to us by the town of Hull is Donna Purcell. She is a, a select board member for the town and comes very highly recommended by the town administrator.
And I would echo that shortly after the water system was, after the affirmative town meeting vote, there was a night when I think Tom and Jim Taylor and I went to Hull to sort of talk about the transition. And the select board at the time recommended that one of their members serve on the Citizens Advisory Board to start to enhance communication between the town and also to facilitate issue resolution. That idea made a lot of sense to us at the time.
Great. So I'd like to move to appoint Donna Purcell as the town of Hull's representative to the Ware River Water System Citizens Advisory Board for a term ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye.
I'll take motion to appoint John Streuzieri as a town of Hull's representative to the Ware River Water System Citizens Advisory Board for a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Thank you. And I just mentioned for, for the public, the, we appointed the Hingham members, as, as Tom mentioned earlier in the fall, but we're very fortunate that Sam Mullen, the former Chair of the Water Supply Committee, Chrissy Robertson, Stephen Weiss stepped forward to be considered. And as Superintendent Tierney mentioned in his, in our last Water Commissioner meeting, he has engaged them on several occasions and it's been very helpful. And we will hopefully be able to appoint the Cohasset representative fairly soon. Selectmen and town administrator reports. Michelle?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Tom?
Not tonight. Thank you, Mary.
Joe?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Bill?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Okay, I, I had one, I had one thing. I, Diane Denapoli was on our call a little bit earlier and, and just left, but I just wanted to inform both of my colleagues in the town that the, the newly reconstituted Commission on Disabilities, being chaired by Diane Denapoli, has been actively working on a number of fronts. They are organizing themselves, they are developing bylaws. They have held meetings, they have brought in state representatives to help shape their work. Diane and I have, have a monthly call to talk about priorities and the priority area of focus that the commission is going to be working on over the next ninety days relates to town meeting. And that's how do we make our sort of town meeting process more accessible to people? That, that involves both things like the warrant and the, the opportunity, for example, to make large-print warrants available on request, as well as the logistics, the logistics for the meeting. So we are very grateful and that this commission has a lot of energy and they're getting a lot done, and I think they will be very helpful as we move towards, as we move towards town meeting this year. So with, with that, the I'm just looking for my language here. I'm going to, the board will now enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the Plymouth County Superior Court case of Matthew Hursey v. Town of Hingham, docket number one-eight-eight-three, CV-oh-oh-five-eight-three, under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A-three, because an open discussion may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body. The board will not reconvene in open session. Roll call vote. Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Mary Power? Aye. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.